Official watch up here, can we go ahead and get started? All right, so six o'clock, I call this meeting in Saginaw City Council order. Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Face the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. One state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. I think I know that. That was on before.
I'm just gonna say it louder behind the camera.
Thank you, please. Item number two is the...
Thank you, Mayor, for doing that.
Item number two is the invocation for that, our friend Reverend Jason Vlinney. Welcome. Thank you so much, Jason. Item number three is audience participation that is covered on the video screen. I would like to point out that we are doing some new technology tonight. We should be live streaming this meeting on the interwebs. So, everybody wave right there. I'm hopeful there are people watching, I don't know, but I think after the meeting we'll find out if there's participation. So, please keep that in mind when you push your button, that you are on. And folks, when you come to the lectern to speak, please speak loudly into that, I don't think that microphone works very well for the livestream, but we're working on that issue, so. Let's move ahead with item number four is the consent agenda. Item A is action regarding approval of minutes from November 6. B, action regarding purchase of a digital workstation for the building inspection department. C is action regarding official appointment of the city of Fort Worth Wholesale Water and Wastewater Customer Advisory Committee. D is action regarding ordinance number 2018 des 20, authorizing the mayor to execute a quick team deed abandoning an eight-foot utility extension to Kyle Hansen and Jennifer Hansen. E is action regarding ordinance 2018 des 21, amending the chapter 10 Building and Buildings Regulation by adopting 2018 edition of the International Code, 2017 edition of the National Electrical Code. F, action regarding resolution 2018 des 23, adoption of a building improvement grant program, policy. G is action regarding authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Saginaw and Ardent Mills LLC to fund a mural on the Ardent Mills property depicting the words "Welcome to Saginaw." H is action regarding purchase of a 2018 Chevrolet 2500 single cab pickup truck for the water department. Any discussion, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Patrick.
I'll second.
David's second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Is opposed, they're honored? Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum this evening. Moving on. Item number five, presentation by the Charter Review Committee. For that, we have a very special guest backed by popular demand. I made him promise to be clean, keep it clean tonight, so, Mr. Ed Larson, welcome, sir. I want to say thank you, Mr. Larson, thanks for your service, and also thanks for the whole committee. I know it's a lot of work and really appreciate what y'all did. We appreciate you getting voluntold and taking up this mantle and running the committee, and I know it ran well because of that, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Larson? All right. Patrick, you got a question? No? Okay. All right, so we are taking no action on that, that's just a presentation tonight. Correct. Okay. And we will, the city council will pick this up in the future and discuss how we want to move forward. So, item number six is...
Mr. Mayor, I'm... That's for interrupting. Just so, if anyone does have any questions, my partner, Betsy Elym, is in attendance tonight. If you have any questions, I know she attended each of the commission meetings and she'll be assisting with the final product, but if not, that's absolutely fine, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. I think, once we dig into this, yes, we probably will. David, you have something?
I'm in the same sentiment. I've read through it over the past couple of days, probably going to take a little time to digest it, and then come up with some comprehensive responses.
I think that's where everybody is, so absolutely. Thank you very much for your help. And thank you, Bren. All right, so moving on, item number six, consideration action regarding the fourth renewal of interlocal agreement with Tarrant County for the Bailey-Boswell Bridge project. With that, we have Rick Tries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. As the title indicates, this is the fourth renewal of this agreement. This is a little different than past renewals in that it's a good news story that Tarrant County has agreed to provide an additional one and a half million dollars on a matching basis to increase their funding amount to five and a half million. We anticipate that that project will be advertised and perhaps hopefully under construction by next spring, summer. Their cash flow will begin a million dollars each quarter, beginning at that time for reimbursement of eligible expenses, which is construction expense, and that money will run out in the third quarter of 2020. So, that's a good news story for Saginaw. If you've got any questions, be glad to try to answer those.
Mayor, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify my position on this issue. I have some serious reservations as to whether it is wise to go ahead with the building of the overpass. However, if that is done, I certainly would like to have any and all assistance financially that we could get. So, I would be in favor of the proposal, but I didn't want to be misunderstood as that being in favor of the bridge itself.
Yes, ma'am. This doesn't obligate us to actually build the project, it just provides another funding mechanism for Tarrant County to assist us, so the final authorization for construction will come back to this body at the appropriate time, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Patrick, you want to go?
Yes. We started out with the overpass budget being 9.1 million, with 4 million coming from the county and 5.1 coming from the taxpayers. What are we anticipating that budget being today for the overpass?
With this additional funding, we're approximately a million and a half over the budget amount. That's just based on current estimates from the industry, so time will tell when we bid the project what the actual amount will be.
So, we're thinking instead of 9.1, it would be 10.6?
Roughly 10 and a half, yeah.
Okay. So, 10 and a half million. It sounds like that the county is coming up with enough money to basically solve our problem of a budget overrun, we would hope.
I believe there will still be a shortage of a million and a half on the funding.
That's much appreciated from Tarrant County.
It is, and of course, I think some of our estimates, what you're seeing is the play of tariffs on steel, et cetera, so hopefully some of that will be resolved by the time we bid this project, and maybe prices will come down. We'll just, we'll have to deal with that at the time that we bid.
Mayor Flippo, you mind just sending a letter of appreciation from the county, hoping to speak on behalf of the council at least, to Commissioner Johnson, letting him know we certainly appreciate it?
Absolutely, we certainly will, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just want to clarify, the total project budget, I believe, is around 12 million, so that would, because of market-based pressures, steel and concrete inflation, we're still looking at a shortfall of a million and a half. Yeah, I just want to make that clear.
Thanks for that clarification.
Really, today, that's an estimate, we don't know the exact numbers that we want to know until we bid. Right? Okay. Excellent. So, action on this, we need to approve this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If so, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the agreement by Tarrant County to increase their contribution by 1.5 million dollars over the original $4 million commitment as presented.
Thank you, Patrick.
I'll second.
Valley's second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Is opposed, or is none? Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Turn myself off. Item number seven, consideration action regarding award of contract for the rectangular rapid flashing beacon Basswood Boulevard at Whittaker Stop Drive. For that, Director of Public Works, Rick Tries.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a construction project to provide a flashing beacon that it's a cross, located at fire station number two on Basswood Boulevard. We have similar flashing beacon crossings on Bailey-Boswell up toward 156, and also at Knowles, and so this will enhance the crossing at that location, is a mid-block location, there's no traffic control, so visibility is not as good as we would like for it to be, so it's a safety enhancement. Also, the existing crosswalk is located in the driveway of fire station number two, does not meet ADA standards, it's a 7 percent slope, so this will allow us to get the walk out of the driveway and cross the median at a more appropriate location. Bean was, it was bid by invitation, Bean Electric was the only respondent, and their low bid was 47,376.50. About $9,000 of that is concrete work, the rest of it is the actual beacon work itself, so we recommend that that be awarded to Bean Electric.
Explain, I think I understand, will you explain exactly how this beacon work will work? What will it end up looking like when it's completed?
It's actually raised signals, if you will, that's located in the pavement itself as it crosses the street, will not be an impact to traffic at all, but the people who want to use the crosswalk would activate the signal, and it will begin the flashing so that alerts motorists that there will be use of the crosswalk at that time, so they're required to stop. So, it's just an enhancement for visibility. There is a crosswalk there today, and motorist are required to stop clearly when there's someone in the crosswalk, but it's just, again, a mid-block without traffic control, so speeds are great, and then people may not recognize that there's a crosswalk coming up, and this will help them recognize that earlier.
Thank you, Rick. Questions?
I have a question. Pardon me. Is this coordinated in any way with the fire station number two? If somebody's in the crosswalk and the station is toned out to go respond to a call?
I can answer whether or not it has a preemption, if that's your question, probably does not. There has been much coordination with the fire department as we move this project forward. If you read the history in the memo, we tried to fund it with savings from last year's budget, was unable to do that, but again, I think just the final product will be much safer than what's out there today.
Any other questions, council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
May I make a motion, then? We award the contract to Bean Electric, the amount of 47,376.50, or allot that money for the project as presented in our packet.
I'll second.
All those in favor raise your right hand. Is opposed, or is none? Thank you. Thank you, Rick. I move forward. Item number eight, so at 6:16, recess into a workshop, and workshop will be here, right? Gabe? This is a sit-in workshop. So, then we move on to item number nine. Item nine is the smoke-free ordinance discussion, and for that, city manager, Gabe Bray.
Mr. Mayor, this is a topic that I understand may have come up at some point in the past. I'm going to pitch this to city attorney, but our general tone tonight is just discuss on how we may proceed towards a smoke-free environment citywide. This is something that's a regional standard. Fort Worth has already adopted similar rules, so I think it's an expectation for residents and visitors, and I believe that we only have three establishments in the city limits that currently allow smoking, so we have a limited pool of areas where smoking exists currently, but with that, Bren could maybe talk through on how we might proceed and get your feedback with bringing in ordinance in the future.
So, absolutely. City manager contacted me just to inquire about the scope of our authority to regulate smoking in public places, and that would include restaurants, hotels, retail areas. And the answer, quite simply, and I wish it was this simple in all regards, but it never is, but with respect to smoking, you have authority, complete authority, to prohibit open public consumption, smoking in restaurants, hotels, other public places, certain distances from open doors, the entrance ways to these retail establishments. Plus, there are no vested rights with respect to smoking, so there's no grandfathering of restaurants simply because they've allowed smoking in the past. The law is fairly clear that the regulation of smoking and the exposure to secondhand smoke is a matter of public health and safety, and that is one of the exceptions to the Vested Rights Act. And then, for purposes of zoning, smoking's not a land use, so there is no grandfathering of smoking. There are plenty of examples, as Gabe pointed out. In fact, we went through this process with many of our clients, you know, 10 to 12 years ago, when that became the thing to do, which was regulate and ban smoking in all restaurants, and so we've put together these ordinances before. You can require that these businesses post signs. If you do allow a smoking area, you can require a separate ventilation system to be completely separate from the non-smoking area. A lot of smoking ordinances do allow for a grace period to come into compliance rather than an immediate prohibition, but you have the authority, and we just are looking for direction from you all as to how to proceed.
Thank you, Bren. And part of how this came about, when we were at Texas Municipal League this year, I saw a booth with the American Cancer Society and talked to them about this, and I, that's why I went to Gabe and said, have we ever done this before, what are our options? And I wanted to bring it to y'all. I don't have any preconceived notions about how we do it or what we want to do, but I wanted to have council input on what we thought about this as far as cigarettes going forward for the city and also vaping, the whole bit, so, council, what do you think?
Yes, I would definitely be in favor of such an ordinance. I think, you know, we have so few establishments that do allow it anyway, and it is good for the public health and safety to have such an ordinance.
I know you said there's no grandfather, but is it possible to allow those establishments who do currently allow smoking, and like you said, put the ventilation system in, but say any new establishments from this point forward cannot permit smoking, or would that be?
No, I, there's no, I don't have any equal protection concerns with respect to smokers prior to a certain date or establishments that allow it, so if you wanted to carve out an exception, if you wanted to have the ordinance apply prospectively only for new establishments, I don't have any concerns with that.
And so, Bren, this is really an ordinance on a behavior, more so than anything else, and I think a lot of cities that have approached this subject have looked at it as, in what I've seen, two different ways. You're limiting somebody's rights to do something, but at the same time, you are preventing someone from violating someone else's rights. Probably the most concrete example that I can think of just happened at the Valero a couple of nights ago, here in town, where pumping gas into my truck, the person standing next to me pumping gas was smoking a cigarette. I don't know if you can write an ordinance against "don't smoke" at the gas station, or, but, you know, the bottom line is, is that that kind of behavior is blatant disrespect for the people that are standing around you, and I believe that an ordinance like this is intended to limit those kinds of interactions. I don't see this kind of ordinance as overtly wanting to limit somebody's behavior.
Many of these ordinances are premised on studies that study the effect of secondhand smoke, so you're absolutely right. It is the infringement, the effect of smoking that it has on non-smokers, not, it's not primarily targeted at changing the behavior of someone who elects to smoke, because they can certainly do so at home, in their car, et cetera. It really is premised upon protecting the public health of bystanders, non-smokers.
So, my only ask would be is that as we are contemplating this ordinance, that the spirit of that ordinance maintain that tone?
Absolutely.
That it is not intended to limit the rights of an individual, but it is intended to prevent the rights of others from being encroached upon?
Absolutely.
What does anybody think about the issue of, you know, regular smoking, whatever you call that, versus vaping, and should both be included? What do y'all think? Do other city ordinances include both, or exclude both?
You know, the few that I found predate vaping, but it would not surprise me if that wasn't contemplated in some of the newer ordinances.
Does that also include other smokeless tobacco products?
I have not seen any reference to smokeless tobacco in terms of, you know, chewable tobacco or anything like that, probably because, as I say, that, as we discussed, is primarily predicated on the effect it has on others.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I think we have a direction from the council to move forward with this ordinance. Everybody agree? Move forward, and we'll have Bren and staff work this up and bring it back to us for discussion and approval in the future.
And are we looking for an absolute prohibition on public places and make a recommendation as to what the scope of public places should be? Do we want a compliance transition period?
I would say, answer the question one, I'd say yes. Question two, a grace period, grace implementation period, what is standard? Six months? What is reasonable?
Six months, it's typically what I've seen, and it can be, I've seen 90 days as well, so.
That seems pretty short. Was everything six months? Sounds reasonable there, buddy?
Are we grandfathering any establishment?
Yeah, let me ask this question. Considering that we do have establishments that probably have a customer base that have an enjoyment with hanging out with friends at an establishment, is there the possibility of creating a permit and allowing that establishment to elect in by permit? And what I'm thinking through here, Bren, out loud, is those establishments, the marketplace will decide who frequents the establishment or not. No one is forced to go to that establishment, but if we were to allow them to permit, or to pull a permit to allow smoking, is that something that's normal?
Yes, so what we could do is allow pre-existing businesses a certain number of days to come in and register as a grandfather, we can just call it grandfathered, as a grandfather practice. What I think we should avoid is creating a prospective permit process where a new business could come in, and then exercising wild discretion, we decide whether you get to have smokers or not, so. But if it's to protect existing businesses, we could certainly create a program for those three establishments to come in and essentially register.
Yeah, I agree with that, because what I could see an unintended consequence being is that Saginaw would be the smokers' capital of Texas, with businesses opening up left and right, pulling permits, and...
Dubious title, yes.
Got it.
Yeah, I'm sort of, I would be against allowing the continuation of smoking. I think this ordinance should be all or nothing. It would be, would be my thought that, to protect the rights of folks that don't smoke, I mean, there are certain places I don't go because they allow smoking, and I think that's where other cities have gone. My understanding is other cities have, other entities have gone completely smokeless. Allowing for a grace period, sure, that's fine, and I know some establishments in Saginaw have recently gone smokeless on their own, so.
Or you could, I think the city of Arlington, and don't quote me on the city, they're, the way they addressed it was to say essentially, if you do allow smoking as of the effective date, and you want to continue it, these are the specific construction and improvements that you need to include. You need to have a dividing wall, separate ventilation system, and essentially it's cause prohibitive, and so these businesses essentially would elect to go non-smoking.
What do folks think, excuse me, think of that idea?
I'd agree with it. I could agree with it, yeah.
I agree with Patrick in this respect. We're talking about three establishments here. They have a pretty regular group of people that, yes, thank you, that visit, that visit these places, and, you know, a lot of non-smokers just don't go there. I think maybe doing some things like a ventilation system or something might be appropriate, but, you know, we have a hard time trying to keep businesses here anyway in some areas, and I'd like to keep, you know, the ones that we have, and then just not permit any new smoking establishments in the future.
Well, but some of the ones that if they don't go now because there's smoke there, those people might go if there's no smoke there, so they might pick up a different clientele.
Or we consolidate all of the smokers in Tarrant County and sell a lot more other products in those establishments, because that's the only place they can go smoke. I mean, it's market-driven in my mind, so.
I tend to agree with the mayor. I think it should be sort of an all or nothing, and just blanket across the board, no smoking. That's just my opinion.
So, what is our direction to the attorney and staff? Council? What would we like to do? How we want to move forward with this? I think we've, we want to move forward with some sort of ordinance, we just need to understand what that will be.
Can we, can we maybe have two options? Or maybe give us something to look at that we can review and weigh in on? A draft?
We can certainly do that. We can reach out to these three businesses to get their perspective. I mean, for one...
Excellent point.
Requiring a separate ventilation system and a dividing wall, they may just say, we're not interested, and so. "We're not interested," and so.
Most likely, if you ask them if they want to spend some more money to comply, their business is going to say no, so, not that I want to ignore them or not take their input, they're welcome to come to open meetings when we, when we discuss it. I'm afraid if you ask, "Do you want us to do this?", what's the answer you're going to get? No.
Well, I can certainly provide a couple of different examples. Certainly not a problem, and then we can workshop this one more time with those examples, and then you all could give me direction after that.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Good plan. Have we reached out to any of these, these businesses yet?
No, we haven't.
Technically, we have, with a posted agenda item. So, I mean, if, if there was such a, yeah, fervor to keep smoking in Saginaw, we probably would have, we probably would have seen it this evening, but I think we should advocate for those businesses and reach out to them and see if they have an interest, and if they don't, then we stop the advocacy.
Okay, I agree, I agree with that, absolutely. Okay. Bren, you, you clear?
I am, thank you, thank you.
Excellent. All right, so no action, other action on this item, so that is number nine. Update on Police Department and Community Policing, and for that, Police Chief Lee Howe. Welcome, chief.
I'm hoping you have any other issues to fill on that you guys may be able to.
So chief, does that put us in a position where we're more likely to be a farm club for other departments?
It can.
Chief, I have a question about that. What has your experience been in the use of storefronts in creating a small satellite PD in a storefront?
So one caveat on storefronts is if we don't own it or have a long-term lease on it and it's donated to us, which is common, and people are usually very generous to donate property for a short period, it certainly becomes more valuable to them than it is to donate it to us. And so you end up losing it and move or just abandoning that. But it's certainly, you know, if there's a portion of a development that wants to give us a small office space, it really doesn't require a whole lot of space to do what we need to do. We just need an office space, access probably to restroom facilities, phone, computers, and that sort of thing, we could do a lot of that.
So we would have to man a storefront with someone there all the time and keep a patrol car there, keep someone there just in the event of an emergency? Are they called out during an emergency? Or how would that work?
You know, it wouldn't have to be manned all the time. It could just be a place for officers to stop in and meet people, to do reports, to make phone calls, write up things, and, you know, part of an overall response time that we have is that our current systems require our officers to come back to the police station rather than stay in the field to finish up reports, especially if they have an arrest, obviously, but even the instant reports, they have to upload those into the records management system and do some paperwork that can only be done currently at the police station. But we had that capability at satellite office, it could reduce the amount of back-and-forth from those areas of town that would be difficult to get to.
Well, you mentioned northeast, which would probably help having the bridge there to get across the tracks. Is that where the biggest problem is, the getting through the trains besides just the distance?
That is an obstacle, obviously. Again, like I said, you know, when you think about driving from point A to point B, if you leave here and try to get to better than Boswell and 156, it's going to take you sometimes 15 minutes, you know, depending on the track, no matter which direction you go, whether you encounter a train or not. And part of that's construction, part of it's, like I say, the industrial area, part of it is just the lack of different avenues to take to get there.
But the bridge certainly will help if there's a train there.
I'm sure that there would be circumstances where if there's a train across the tracks, it definitely would help.
Okay.
So Chief, in that structure, do you see the chief's position being more of an administrative role and the assistant chief being more of an operational role?
It would be more creative.
Okay. So Chief, does that put us in a position where we're more likely to be a farm club for other departments?
It can.
So Chief, these being communicated currently to PGAL in our master planning efforts, some of these, this feedback?
Yes.
Fantastic.
I just coincidentally was watching the news, the local news tonight, and there was a story about community policing in one of our area cities. And your officers may already do this. I think it's really good to have the planned programs that you do have. But what happened in this case, I hope everyone could hear me, I'm not sure. In this particular case, an officer was on patrol and he saw two young men playing a pickup game of basketball. So he asked for backup, and another police officer who happened to be available came and they had, they just had a pickup basketball game with those two young men. And, you know, if, I thought it was a good idea to kind of look for opportunities, unplanned opportunities like that. And your officers may already do that, but if not, I think it would be a good idea.
That's a great idea. I think really we have a lot of opportunity through the schools and with kids. Talked to Dr. Chadwell about, you know, our officers and employees showing up at the school and having lunch with the kids, and I think a few of them have done that this fall. And there's other opportunities that they afford us, like a reading program that they are implementing called Read to Win. So I'm going to try to introduce that to some folks who are interested in it. I think we need to have a strong presence, a frequent presence in the schools and with children, so, and that's, that would be an opportunity that I, I don't know that I would do real well without it. No, we got some basketball players on the floor.
It's funny because the officer that asked for backup, he did say in the, in the story, he was not good at basketball, although that's why he called for backup.
So is there a code in the police repertoire, a 222 for triple double?
I don't know. We need to figure that out.
Chief, I have a question. I was approached by Ms. Young, a current president of the Saginaw CPA. She thought it would be a great idea if any of the city council members would consider participating in the, was it the Level One class coming up this March? But I understand your classes are on Tuesday night, so it makes it kind of difficult for us to participate.
Well, if you're asking us to change for another month?
I think it would probably be easier for you than it would be for us.
Yeah. We'll take a look at it, yeah. I would love it.